Take to occur before that, that happens? I would say, rough estimate, we're probably a year out before they'll be able to turn up service. There's just a lot of pieces that have to be matched there. They've got to match all their postal addressing with their, with their 911 addresses they've assigned. The town of Boy City had to be remapped completely, or at least half the town was redone. And they're in the process of finishing that right now. And then, this plan will be submitted. I don't know that they'll be able to meet the 90-day requirement, there's a lot of documentation. Beaver County discut, theirs approved, it's about three inches thick, I looked at it the other day. But I think a year would be possibly attainable. So I don't, I don't see any amount probably coming from them. Probably, at least eight months, probably 12 months would be more realistic. We do get a small contract fee for helping with them now, but it's, it's a small amount compared to what, what it would be for dispatch services. Some of that, by bringing on another county, also may save, for instance, 911 trunks are one of our biggest expenses. We have eight 911 trunks, that means eight calls could come in at a time. And we will actually not have to increase the size to bring Seminole County on. So we're able to, to keep the same amount of infrastructure in a lot of cases. There's going to have to be some radio stuff, radio equipment that's put in place between the two entities, but that's going to be their responsibility to take care of that.
So you're looking at Beaver also?
So Beavers has decided to go ahead and move ahead with their own system. They think they can sustain it. From the sustainability study, it's, it's close. It's a different system than what we're implementing, but they've got that approval. We do have, we're working currently with Beaver County though, to be able to transfer calls pretty seamlessly between the two entities, just like the big fire they had recently when we're overloaded. Or we have those border, border areas where today, we actually have to hang up and dial another number, not transfer the call. And since they will have 911 service, we'll be able to bring that online. There's still one other county up in the region, Harper County does not have 911, and they, they're looking at different options also. We've, we've not given them a formal proposal, but we've mentioned that they could at least tie to our equipment and save equipment cost, and they're, they're looking at not only us, but also Beaver and Woods County as an option, so.
I see Matt's the second biggest figure on here. You have any?
Yeah, and Matt is the chairman of the 911 board, and Babs is our vice chairman, so.
Might as well just open Pandora's box.
So, I'll just give you a little bit of what's happened in my, my position, I guess, is that the town of Tyrone isn't able to come up with anything for this. And so, their share got added to mine, right? Between, and I mean, that's, I don't know that I like that, but it's, it's got to be done. We've, we've worked multiple years on this. We've, we've moved it forward to where I think it's a ball that's rolling now, and if you get in the way, you're going to get crushed by it, because it's coming. We're going to be in compliance with a lot of things, and we're out of compliance now. I think, I think Justin covered that in the letter. So, I'll, I'll answer any question that I might go answer, if you've got one.
Okay, my understanding is, okay, the 266,000 is what you came up with for the city share? And the city budgeted 260,000?
My discussions with both chiefs, it was a little over 204, about 204,000. We're about $62,000 short budget, budgetarily, on that figure.
So that's what we're really discussing tonight, isn't it? You know, is whether or not to go ahead and to give you the extra $62,000 that's not budgeted. I guess, question probably asked is, can we find that in our budget?
That's a question I cannot answer today. I can, I can, I just have not had the time to look at, into it and see where there might be some money in our budget? Or if there's areas that where we would have to go in and increase our budget to handle that money? I just, I have not, I have not had enough time to figure that out yet.
I think, my concern is that, and this is just mine, I'm concerned about this need to go forward for the citizens, regardless of what the cost is. And, you know, yeah, I don't want to pay any extra for the city, just like you're getting with your, your department. But at the same time, I still think it needs to go forward, and, and we can argue about money later, as far as I'm concerned.
We've had this conversation with every council, I've still got it, I've attended every council at least twice, and this week I've hit some third time. Yet everybody's kind of, you know, it's something, some of these entities have never paid for dispatch services, so it's a brand-new fee that, that has came up. But Goodwill, Texas, I believe approved it last night, I think Hookers got it on the agenda for the 17th to approve. And the, it, we did not come to these numbers easily. We probably had five, six meetings, this has been a budget item. And the first set of numbers was actually much higher, because the county commissioners were not kicking in that portion off the top. So when you divide it out, the, the amount needed, Guyman's amount was, I think, 327,000. And so, we've been meeting with everybody possible to see ways to reduce those amounts, and that's where we're at today.
Now, what happens if you come under budget for the year? Are you, are you going to refund the city?
Well, I, I can tell you, that budget, if you looked at it, it's, it's tight. And there's no overtime figured for employees in that budget at all. I don't know if the dispatch center anywhere has to have overtime. And so, we've, we have pinched those numbers down. I will, I'll be very pleased if we come in under budget, but I'm expecting it to still be pretty tight.
So if you don't, go ahead.
Is that around, if we, do we have to any other that are over budget?
We'll be looking at the next year's budget.
What, when, when do you plan to go operational?
So, our date has actually been rolled back, not, it's not due to anything we are waiting on. We, we obtained grant funds, and we wanted to wait to, it was the first chance that the state's ever issued grant funds in probably 15 years. And so, we did get a little over 220,000 in grant funds to pay for some of the equipment. But waiting on that process for money to be released, and then we, to get a notice to receive the issue purchase orders, that moved our equipment being built back a little bit. So the new date is the first week of June, that would be turn up. The day, actual day we're looking at is either June 3rd or 4th. That would be flipping the switch, turning down the sheriff's office PSAP, turning down the police department PSAP, and the new center would be operational at that time, so. We are also waiting on the state of Oklahoma with the OLEDs terminal. So, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces. It's a, it's a major project anytime you implement a new, just a new 911 system, or just a new CAD, or just a new radio. So we're, we're implementing a new 911 system, new recording system, new CAD, and a complete new radio system. And then we're trying to train everybody on it, and then move in. So, there's a lot of pieces there. Right now, it looks like we're on target for June 3rd. We really need to turn up as soon as possible, just because we've got the new equipment setting here, and, and we need to get operational.
So, I guess my other question would be, would it be, would it be a hindrance to you if we elected to table this and come back in a special meeting after Joe Don's found the money? A couple of weeks?
I would think, we've got it, like I said, a hookers meeting in the 17th, so that's another week, and then we, after, I've got to get on a council, or a county commissioner agenda to confirm their numbers again, so I would think a couple of weeks would be an option.
I don't almost think we have to find the money, I think that, I think we ought to, I'd like, I guess, to make a motion to go ahead.
I have one more question, Mr. Conroy. Is there any relation, is there, does this have anything to do with FirstNet at all?
Not really. FirstNet, we might, we might do some backhauling or some emergency, like-
Utilizing the same?
Right, so, the new 911 system has some capability that the old one does not. As I mentioned in that document, we're going to, for the first time, have a bug out tonight, so if something happens in the center, we can go still take calls, or you have a tornado, you can turn up two more positions in an emergency, anywhere with a VPN, so you can even carry it over LTE.
Understood.
So there's been some conversations about that as a redundancy plan. A lot of entities now too, if you have, you have a wildfire, you have like Beaverhead, or you have the Woodward, last Woodward tornado, they turned up a PSAP right in the center of that, and routed certain calls to just that PSAP for 911. And, and so that technology is there with a FirstNet or an LTE backup, so.
And you, you should have the bandwidth to share, right?
Right. There's two laptops that are in this, that are purchased, the two that'll actually be at the second PSAP, PDCI. They're mobile, they can go anywhere, and as long as we have a VPN to get to the server, we can take calls.
Good to go. Thank you.
We understand that it's a, you know, it's kind of a shock to everybody. I mean, if you look at the, the smaller communities, I'll, I'll tell you what they've been paying over the last 20, 30 years, is they've been paying $500 a year for a repeater fee, and that's to help keep the lights on and the heat at the tower, so that things work. And that, so, we're going from $500 per agency to help keep the lights on to, to some pretty good-sized, you know, money, right?
Yes.
But, things are changing. We've got to be in compliance with state, with what the state requires. And, and I, I've told this story 100 times, but somebody calls 911 now, and it goes to Guyman PD when it's supposed to go to sheriff's office. The Guyman PD gets all the information, right? And then they turn around, they call the sheriff's office, and they transfer it, and guess what that person who called 911, who maybe their father's dying of a heart attack? They get to tell their story all over again, and waste valuable time to tell their story to the, to my dispatch now. So that's something that, that I think is, is a top priority when it comes to, do we do this, or do we not do this? I just, that'd be just something I'd ask for you to think about. Now, whether you table it or not, I understand that it's kind of a shock, right? I mean, that's, I wish I had that, I'd catch him, but, you know, I don't, so, I'm doing as much as I can.
I'd like to-
Thank you for your time.
Make a motion to approve the amount to be paid yearly by the city of Guyman to the Texas County 911 Trust Authority for the Emergency Dispatch Services.
Second.
I have a motion, a second.
Peterson?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Egger?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Item nine, discussion of possible action on approval of revised informal, informal interlocal agreement for joint emergency management services.
This is one where you went from, was it 8,000 a year? Or 16,000, they want 28,500? Is that right?
That is correct.
Have we gotten any reason why such a-
I have not been able to have any kind of conversations with, with the, about this interlocal agreement. I just know that we're looking at about 178% increase, and haven't had the opportunity yet to see if, what was budgeted originally. I'm assuming it was the 16,000 that was the budget originally? So we're talking about, about $12,500. I'm sure that we can figure out something as fund-wise, the same as we will on the, the previous item, it's just, I don't know, I can't tell you what, Dave, where that's at.
See, this is one where Mr. Dunham can get out in front of it and talk to the commissioners and, and figure that out. I think this could be tabled.
I agree with that.
I make a motion that we table item nine.
On second.
I have a motion, a second.
Egger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Item 10, discussion of possible action to authorize advertising for bids for a new and, and unused fairway mower for the golf course.
Well, I did talk to the, our public works director about this. We are looking at, trying to purchase a new mower. There are several different ways that we can go about doing this. After some discussions with the attorney, our recommendation is to authorize advertising for bids, and we, but, but with the knowledge we may be purchasing off of state contract. We'll get our bids in, we'll look at state contract, and see where we can get the best value for our dollar.
I make the motion that we authorize advertising for bids for a new and, or unused fairway mower for the golf course.
On second.
I have a motion, a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Egger?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Item 11, discussion of possible action on approving the funding request in the amount of $30,000 for Pioneer Days Rodeo as recommended by the Convention and Tourism Board.
So this is a recommendation from our Convention and Tourism Board for, to become the presenting sponsor for rodeo, for the Pioneer Rodeo Days. It's 30,000, and we will be the presenting sponsor. This rodeo has gone for 10-plus years, and it brings in about 3,000 contestants, not including their family and friends, over the course of three days. And some of them, of course, get here beforehand and, and stay awhile. So we feel like, when it comes to hotels, some of them will be staying with their horses, but I mean, I, I don't think, what was the estimate?
So, so it goes seven days? And, Carrie, how many rooms did we, we paid last year for 84 rooms? We paid for, we didn't get it donated. This year too, we're going to be on national TV for the next three years, we signed a contract. So one of the things we're wanting to do with this money at the end, if we're able to be successful again, is try to start putting some money back into the arena in some different ways. We kind of, had visited with Pete a time or two- We kind of had visited with Pete a time or two, but we've got some things out there that are starting to dilapidate a little bit. Ticket booths, several things. So, we were wanting, we're trying to hopefully, if we can do all right this year, we'll be able to start putting a little bit of money back into it.
I saw your, the budget and you guys are hopefully planning on making about 50K this year. And you lost about 12.5 last year because of a rain out possibly?
We lost 12,500 that we didn't make because it rained, but we were profitable. So, yes. And this year, one thing we did for the chamber, which I, I think we gotta support them too. And obviously, they run the rodeo to some extent. They, we bought a pod. And we're trying, we're gonna place the pod up at the hospitality building to store like tables and chairs and stuff in. So, that was one of the improvements that we were looking at, Sergio. And you are correct, the rain out, it doesn't take much, the budget's tight if you really look at the budget closely. It doesn't take much to take it a different direction, so.
Would we be better off to put this on a line item in the budget every year?
You could. I wasn't, I wasn't part of the council when we removed that as a line item. I think that would be a simpler process probably, 'cause what we end up, last year, I think, before I was on council, I came three or four times to try to get this done and it was.
That's just something to think about.
Yeah. And I think maybe that's a Joe Don request at, after this, but, yeah. One thing too is, because of the TV sponsor, we were able to raise our contestant added money to each event. And that's gonna bring in quite a few, and then the TV's gonna bring in quite a few contestants too, so.
We got about 60K added money?
7,500 times nine, so, somewhere right in there. So, which is, that's a really big deal. That's, that's, so Guyman, one time, they jumped to a $10,000 added money. Really, a town this size, we couldn't sustain it. Mr. Frank Hauser in the back, who used to be number seven calf roper in the world, can tell you 7,500's a pretty good amount. Would you agree, Ray, for a rodeo this size? So, I mean, that's, that's gonna bring in a lot of contestants, maybe even pull Ray out of retirement. So, but, that's, that's a good spot for Guyman. 6,000's a little cheap getting people in and out, so.
I, I volunteered last year and I helped out in, in the arena. And you, I think the rodeo committee has it going in a good direction as well, so.
I make a motion that we approve $30,000 for Pioneer Days Rodeo.
Second.
I have a motion, a second.
Egger?
I will abstain.
Peterson?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got four ayes and one abstain.
Item 12, discussion and possible action on approving the funding request in the amount of $5,000 for Leadership Oklahoma as recommended, as recommended by the Convention and Tourism Board.
This is another recommendation from, again, the Convention and Tourism Board for $5,000 to bring in Leadership Oklahoma. So, once a year, they get the leaders that are all across Oklahoma, bring them to cities. So, this money will help facilitate when they come in, food, also activities that will be done just to kind of showcase Guyman and get people who normally wouldn't be in this area, in this area, and kind of show them what we can, what we have up here in this panhandle.
Make a motion that we approve, agenda item number 12, funding request of $5,000 for Leadership Oklahoma.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second.
Egger?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Item 13, discussion and possible action on nominations of two trustees to the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group Board of Trustees.
Just let you know, annually, OMAG has elections to fill their board positions. This year, there are three board positions open for election, which would be the election between all of the OMAG communities. The incumbents for two of the positions is Ms. Pam Pope, City Manager of Collinsville, Mr. Daniel Tarkington, the Mayor of Shakota, and there's an open position. The council has to approve, or make the nomination if they would like a, a city official to be nominated to this board. And I think Vice Mayor Peterson has done some checking and would be willing to accept that nomination if so, if the decision is made. But, this does have to be turned in to OMAG by March 15th, so they can get it on their ballot for. We will eventually elect, that ballot will eventually come back to the board for their, their choices. And currently, the closest representative we have to, or North West Oklahoma has for this board is Mr. Craig Stevenson, who is the City Manager of Pompano City. I think it'd be good for, I think it'd be good for our community to have a representative on this board.
I would like to make a motion because of that exactly, on the nomination, on nominating Kim Peterson to one of the trustees to the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Board of Trustees.
Second.
I have a motion, a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Egger?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
I guess I'll say aye.
Good luck.
We've got five ayes.
Good luck.
By saying aye, you did it to yourself.
Item 14, any new business? Okay. Item 15, we'll stand adjourned as the Council.
Uh, Utilities is next. I mean, if you go by that order.
We'll reconvene as the special meeting of the Guyman Utilities Authority calls me into order. Item two, approve minutes of the special meeting of January 14th, 2020.
I make a motion that we approve special meeting minutes, January 14th, 2020, item two.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second.
Egger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Item three, discussion and possible action on approval of construction manager at-risk contract in amendment with the MultiCon, with MultiCon for the Nash Soccer Complex project contingent upon review and approval of the city attorney and receipt of the state certification.
Make a motion that we table item three.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second.
Egger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Item four, discussion and possible action to authorize advertising for bids on two new and unused sanitation trucks, including a trade-in for two, two 2009 model freight liners.
I think everybody knows what this is all about. We've been wanting, needing some new trash trucks for quite a while, so. We just now got around to getting this road up to try to go out and get some bids. The two trash trucks we're wanting to trade in, they're pretty old, they're costing us a lot on the repair fees, so. That's what we're asking for, this will come out of that sanitation capital fee. And I think, the most current numbers, I think the money's there. I mean, it's just ready to be spent.
I know we budgeted for two.
We did. It just depends on what they come in at, what the bids are, so.
Make a motion that we authorize to advertise for bids on two new and unused sanitation trucks, including trade-in of two 2009 model freight liners, item four. I second it.
I have a motion, a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Egger?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
So, what is the difference between new and unused?
I said or earlier, so. Caught me off guard a little bit.
Item five, discussion and possible action to authorize advertising for bids on new center pivot sprinkler.
Okay. We've got, we've got four pivots, okay? One of these is old, it's like 30 years old. We're having some problems with getting it lined up, it's breaking frames and stuff. We need to get it replaced. The thing about this is, this was supposed to be a capital lighting and somehow it didn't get put in our capital budget? So, we're probably gonna have to do a budget amendment on this. The last price quote we got on a pivot was around 80,000. I don't know what that is. We're asking for them to take it down, haul it off. I don't want to mess with the junk or the scrap. So, we're asking them to take down, haul it off, put it up.
Can I ask a question? So, when I read this, and I meant to call you earlier, Tracy, but a lot of the times when you lease ground, the farmer will provide the pivot if you give a five or seven-year lease. Could we redo our leases with the farmers that are doing that and possibly get them to have the expenditure out on that?
I, I think we need to look at some of the contracts and some of the wording in it.
Because I think there's a lot, I know, I know for a fact, there's a lot of farmers that would be willing to do that in a contract.
Well, and that would be great. And if they would maintain it all, the problem is, we have to get rid of water. It don't matter what the farmer does.
You have to what?
Get rid of wastewater. It doesn't matter what the farmer wants to do. So, we have control this way. In a way, we can get rid of the water.
I think if we looked at how Seaboard was writing their contracts where the farmers own those pivots, I think there's a way we could do that, for sure.
Yeah, no, I think we'd have to look at it because we want control of this. We want the control.
These contracts provide, the first priority is getting rid of the water.
Yeah.
Regardless of whether the farmer needs it or not.
Seaboard's in that way too.
So, that's, you know, that's.
We want it to our advantage on the wastewater.
And Seaboard's contracts are in that way too. It doesn't matter when and how. I mean, you try to, they try to work with you on that when you want to take it affluent, but I think, I mean, I think there's sure a way to do that and it'd help us get rid of some of that cost.
I think it's time that we look at the wording of it then maybe and, and say, hey, give us more of an advantage. Not damn, I'm sorry.
Do we know when the contract is up?
It's at 27, wasn't it? Didn't it? I think it's just been redone. You guys just, he wanted some things changed, he wanted to run cattle. So, we went in there and I think it's up in 27 now.
7L land and cattle is up.
7L cattle, but this is Clay Curtis contract is what we're talking for the farmer.
Is this on, is this on our land or?
This is on our land, the four circles, yeah. Yeah, and this pivot that we need, and like I say, it's old, it's, it's time to get rid of it. But, it was somehow missed on the capital when the budget was approved. So, we're gonna have to do an amendment or something. I haven't had an opportunity to talk to Joe Don. He's been a busy man here lately. Everybody wants to talk to him.
This is just to advertise.
Do we share crop that, or do we, do we share crop that ground with Clay on the hay? Or do we, meaning, we get 33%?
We get a percent. We paid that, we pay the electric, we pay this, that. He's, you know, I don't know what the contract, I have memorized it, what all his responsibilities are, what our responsibilities are. Our responsibility is to get rid of wastewater. We pay the electric, we do the initial drop cleaning, there's a lot we're doing right now.
Yeah. And I just wonder, I do think we need to revisit that because most farm contracts are 33% split.
There's a few things we've been discussing with the wastewater collection director.
Yeah.
We've also talked with soil conservation here lately. I, I think there's some things we need to look at and say.
It's a good time to review that contract.
Yeah.
And then, once we have bids for how much this is, and maybe they can come up with a percentage on that contract, so.
Well, if you do a share crop, truly, the farmer will want to come in and do the sprinklers. If you'll give him like a seven-year contract and he'll do the maintenance on it. And then you can write that contract. Like I said, see, all of Seaboard's, they're, they're coming on whenever they want. So, if you're in the middle of harvesting.
We just, we just, we just, we just, we just did a new contract.
We just did a new contract, and I think it's up in 2027, I think.
I'm making, make a motion that we authorize, agenda item number five, to advertise for bids on a new center pivot.
Second.
I have a motion, a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Egger?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, discussion and possible action on approving budget. Budget amendment number one for the GUA fund for an increase of $175,000 for the pilot payment to the Guyman Public Schools.
Well, this is, finishing up, my understanding, this is wrapping up our, the TIF number one and making the final payment to the, the Guyman School System. That's for the.
Did we not, I thought we already approved this.
Well, you may have approved the payment. This is, there's probably a budget adjustment that needed to be done because of that payment. This is the budget adjustment.
I'll make a motion that we approve budget amendment number one for the Guyman Utility Authority Fund for an increase of $175,000 for the final payment on TIF one, the Guyman Public Schools.
Second.
I have a motion, a second.
Egger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Item seven, any new business? Item eight, reports from city manager and council members.
I have some there. First off, I want to say thank you to the city of Guyman staff. There's been a couple of transitions that took place over the last couple of years and you're inheriting some, some good people. I can tell you that right now. And they've, they've been here, they come motivated to work every day and you just, you just got a good group of people that you're bringing in. Welcome to our new city manager. I'm pretty sure everybody here's had the opportunity to meet with him and that's just, takes a lot of perseverance and a lot of the staff has stuck through it. So, I commend the city staff for that and, and also with the work around town. They do an excellent job and I think it's overlooked sometimes and working, I know that there are struggles in sanitation and, and hopefully, we, we got the right man here to, to cure and alleviate those, those problems that we got out there. So, just, I just want city staff to know that we, we, we hear your, we hear your problems and thank you. Moving on, there's a couple of things that I wanted to get on the city manager's plate. I visited, visited with him earlier this, this week, but it was yesterday. There's a mentioning of a dog park that we're kicking around. And also, something about getting some kind of ventilation at the rodeo arena, at that building out at the rodeo arena. I don't even know if the city owns that building, who owns that building. I just know that it's probably some, we're at a place where we can at least go out for bids for, for that building. There's two things and one more thing, the approach projects that's being done on the alleys. I know that Streets Department, Mr. Hernandez is heading that up and I know you gentlemen probably have some part on it, that, that all looks really good. Good, congratulations. That's all I got.
Any other reports?
Nope.
Welcome to our new city manager. And it's an exciting time for Guyman, having the right guy in the job, so. Anything else? Okay. Stand adjourned as the Guyman City, uh, Guyman Utility Authority. We'll reconvene as the Guyman Industrial Authority, calls me into order. Item two, public comments and announcements. Item three, approve the minutes of the special meetings.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meetings, 12 dash, 12, 10, 19, 12, 17, and 19, and 12, 19, and 19.
Second.
I have a motion, a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Egger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Item four, discussion and possible action on approving and issuing the one-time pilot payment of 175,000 to the Guyman Public School.
Make a motion, we approve agenda item number four, the payment of the one-time pilot payment.
Second.
I have a motion, a second.
Egger?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Item five, discussion and possible action on approving budget amendment number one for the GIA fund for an increase of a hundred and seventy-five thousand for the pilot payment to Guyman Public Schools.
Make a motion that we approve budget amendment number one for the Guyman Utility Authority Fund for an increase, or Industrial Authority Fund for an increase of a hundred